Looks like everybody's ready, we'll start. Meeting is called to order, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a lot to get to today, please turn on your microphones, planning commissioners if you haven't. We have a lot to get to today, but I have to take a minute or so here. We recently lost one of our planning commission members, Mike Pullen, a really, really good guy. He's been on this commission for the last eight or nine years. Very conscientious commissioner, he always came prepared, he did his homework, he read, he knew what kind of questions to ask, he was civil and courteous to everyone. Just a fine, fine gentleman, and it's a real loss for the county and for this planning commission. I'd just like to take a moment of silence to remember Mike. Okay, thank you. If anybody would like to say anything about Mike, I'm open to that, but go ahead, Dr. Bellantoni.
He taught my son to drive.
Okay.
Dear, dear Anna.
He was. I wish I'd gotten to know him better, but everything I knew about him was good.
Mike came on about eight years ago, about the same time I did, and I was always impressed with just what Byron said. He was always prepared, he had a deep understanding of what we do here. Always took a very professional approach to it. And whenever his wife came in, his eyes always lit up, so it's a good deal. I miss him deeply. We'll have to go on.
Okay, we have a lot to do. I would like to remind everyone that I insist that whether you're for or against an application or what's going on today, you be courteous, you be civil, you don't talk amongst yourselves or laugh or make comments out there. I want everything to run in a civil and courteous and reasonable manner today. So just remember that, okay? All right. All right, let's see, approval of agenda. Can I get into motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Larry?
Aye.
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 Agenda is approved. Approval of minutes from the October 5th Planning Commission meeting.
I didn't notice any problems with them, so with that being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 5th, 2021.
Second. Okay.
Aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved. I see no unfinished business in front of us. New business, SRU 21004 Echo Land. Mr., let's see, Alex Ubers, I believe, is here. Just tell us briefly about your proposal.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. So, a lot of y'all know Echo Canyon up on Eight Mile. They have a glamping operation up there right now. They have the Royal Gorge cabins on the east side of the property. They have the glamping on the west side of the property. It used to be an RV park back in the day. So they're gonna be looking at expanding their glamping operation for their south. They obtained a parcel just south of their current parcel, and they're going through the SRU process with the hope of being able to use this parcel to expand their glamping operation on.
Okay, I'll let Micah give us the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having found the application is in compliance with the requirements of the Fremont County zoning resolution, staff recommends approval of the special review use permit application with the following contingencies. Relocate the northern two glamping sites in accordance with the 50-foot front setback requirement. Update the general operation characteristics note section on the SRU site plan to include a note that all roadways and walkways within the travel trailer park and campground shall be lit at night to provide safe access. Update the general operations characteristics note section on the SRU site plan to include a note that the service building that is equipped with bathroom facilities located on the Royal Gorge cabin property to the north is utilized to fulfill the service building requirements of the Echo Canyon glamping department... development, I'm sorry. Refuse planned parameters be included as a note under the general operations characteristics on the SRU site plan. The application shall show communication and/or C dot access permit and recorded easement for access through 45126 State Highway 50 be provided. A cistern system on the northern adjoining property of common ownership shall be expanded to serve the proposed sites and note under the general operation characteristics on the SRU site plan. Address all red line comments on the special reviews site plan. Prior to Board of County Commissioners' public hearing, the applicant shall secure fire district approval from all fire protections requirements, roadways, design, and layout and relate construction features from the Canyon City Fire Area Fire Protection District.
Okay. Do you have any photos for us?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any pictures? I guess we had pictures in our file, so.
This is the... this is the one we have for Echo Canyon.
That's okay, I think we've all seen them on our tablets, so we're good. Okay. All right, open us up to the commissioners.
I noticed there's some discussion back and forth about the roadway lights. I happen to be a dark sky guy, but from a safety standpoint, are the rest of the roads in the development, do they have the low lights or not?
Currently, the existing development does not have any low lights around the site, around the glamping area. The whole idea is, you know, to find that sweet spot between camping and staying in a hotel, right? So by not having those lights, it gives the operation the feel that they're aiming for and helps with their clientele. So we would request that we keep the operation going the same way that we have it now without those lights, but, you know, if it's something that the commission feels is in the best interest of safety, we feel like it will deter us slightly from operations, but, you know, ultimately, it's something we're willing to comply with if we have to.
So if this were passed with that contingency, you would just have to have the lights in the new section and still not in the old one?
Correct. Which, you know, yeah, would be a little inconsistent and stuff, but it's not the end of the world. You know, we're here to make a good project that's gonna be safe for everybody, and I think Andy does a stand-up job for his operation, whether it's rafting or the hotel... I mean, the cabins or the glamping. I think they've shown that they have a record of safety on site and it's been going. I think one thing that helps with this property too, super low density on those glamping areas. Each one of these spots was picked from, you know, we looked at the topography, came up with some ideas, then we went out there, we walked around for hours, handpicking every one of these sites. It's low density, so we're, you know, it kind of goes with that. We're not trying to do a real tight RV park that needs to be lit up for safety reasons, things like that.
Is there much ambient light out there from the other businesses?
There is across from Highway 50, but mainly from the Royal Gorge rafting side. If you drive by Echo Canyon at night, it's really dark.
There was a question about the access road from Dixon Lane. Doesn't actually show it connecting from the Fremont County engineer, I believe. How does that... how does that working on the backside there?
I'm sorry, you were saying that it doesn't actually...
The access road doesn't appear to connect to Dixon Lane?
Oh, you're talking about from on the west side there?
Yes.
So the road on the map is brought in from satellite, so it's a matter of... it's not a very improved road. So it's a matter of as we build this road access, going an extra 20 feet to, you know, scrape, recompact, add some more gravel to extend that out. But I think the intent was for Dixon Lane to always go there, it's just, it's not a very high-use area, and it's... yeah. And that access also will just be used for staff and potentially an emergency access.
Larry, have anything?
No. No question.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The... I'm just, I'm concerned about the requirements for the lighting. I, you know, safety is always big in my book, and that's something that I think that should be addressed, but in a, you know, kind of a dark skies area almost, it would seem like, especially without having required it with the previous development, that that may be something that could be not necessarily added to this, to our recommendations or findings.
I happen to agree. I'm also a dark sky proponent, and I believe that people come camping. A lot of these people are coming from the cities where they can't experience our nice skies out here in Fremont County, and I tend to like to keep things as dark as we can. I would say that, you know, there are some of these really small lights that only stand about 12 inches tall. They're solar powered, and I use them between my house and my barn. I have a steep hill between my house and my barn. I use them to light my way at night. They don't take up the night sky at all, but they're really small and they like, give me just enough light to walk along safely, so consider that, okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay.
I also agree with that. I think it's a good idea to provide something that is low to the ground. It's not gonna be very obtrusive, but yet it will at least light a little bit up so that people are not gonna be tripping over each other, that sort of thing. So just a suggestion, maybe think about it.
I think this is, you know, pretty straightforward. We've got quite a few contingencies to think of. They are asking for a waiver on the lighting, and there's the access road, 30-foot access width versus 32-inch or 32-foot, which seems reasonable to me. And they're asking for a variance on the full drainage report.
Commissioners? More questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve SRU 21-004. Right?
Mr. Chairman, may I discuss...
Go ahead. Yes.
May I discuss the first variance request before we have a vote?
Sure. Go ahead. Hold on a second. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. So this first variance request, relocate the northern two glamping site in accordance with the 50-foot front setback requirement. So that was one I wanted to talk about because, as I mentioned earlier, we kind of handpicked these sites. The whole idea for this whole property was, in a perfect world, we would have vacated this property line in between and just made it a true expansion of the existing site. The reason we weren't able to do that is because the northern site is zoned as travel trailer park campground, and since that's no longer a recognized zone, we weren't able to just take out that property line there. So we really want this whole property to have the feel of one continuous property with, you know, customers not really knowing any better or anything. With those handpicked sites, if we were to have to move those, it's likely that we would get rid of one, if not two of those. These sites went back a lot, back and forth, and we felt like we didn't want to add any more to this because we wanted it to be very rural, dark skies, feel like you're camping. So we would request consideration for granting a variance on moving those and allowing them to be where they're at right now. The last piece I'd add to that is that, you know, that is technically the front of the property, but it's really kind of the side, depending on how you look at it.
Okay. All right, commissioners, comments on that?
I would agree with you, but did I see a note, Micah, that that goes to the Board of Zoning Adjustment? Not us? For them to get a variance on the 50-foot?
The variance would have to go through BOZA.
So could we change the contingency to say contingent upon approval by the Board, by BOZA?
Yes, they would have to apply for a variance.
Awesome.
Okay, so that's my point.
Perfect, thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, awesome, thank you.
We can say contingent, I suppose.
I'm not sure if BOZA is up and running right now. I understand they're kind of shorthanded, so. Any volunteers want to serve on the Board of Zoning Adjustment? Don't talk to me, but talk to Micah, okay? We are looking for volunteers there, by the way. Okay. Okay, any further comments? Gardner was starting to make a motion, but I'm gonna... Anything else we want to say before he makes his motion? Okay. Gardner, you want to... go ahead.
Make a motion, we approve SRU 21-004 with the stipulation that contingency number one would be subject to approval by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And I would put in that number two, I'd leave the light design up to the discretion of the owners, though they do need to put some sort of light down there.
Okay. Sounds like a good motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Larry?
Yes?
Aye.
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 Good luck. It looks like a very nice development. I'd never done it before, but it looks really nice.
I'm excited to get to work on it.
It's well done, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item B on our agenda. SRU 21003 Rocky Mountain Way Extreme. Dr. Bellantoni, come on up, please.
Good afternoon.
Talk to us. Relaxing.
Do you remember in the spring when I had some real kind of quick ones? Desert concrete pumping, concrete pumping? Remember that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. Today, this time, I am here to represent Rocky Mountain Way Extreme, and I'd like to introduce you to Rodrigo and Ashley Lopez. And they purchased four 40-acre lots in the Phantom Canyon Wilderness Estates, which is north of the Phantom Canyon Estates, out in, by Highway 67 north of that and north of the landfill and up in the vicinity. We're all there, okay? Access was what was one of the challenges, which the Lopezes hired Mr. Mark Olson from Publo County, an attorney, to review the access agreements and the covenants for the access because it is not a county road. So if we could just go to the first slide. Enable editing, and then you can go into Start Slideshow. Ah, there we go. And if you... So anyway, up the 160 acres for, the Lopezes would like to include two... yes, there you go, the next one, there we go. Would like to include the two horizontal rectangle yeller 80 acres in this special review application. The access was a challenge, and you may find more than one letter of opinion in there, and this is why. In 1988, when Phantom Canyon Estates was established and the access road, it's just a bit circuitous, you can see it coming off of the county road on the east. It was established... well, yeah, that one works too. It was established through the lots in the subdivision as a private easement for the property owners to use. And initially, the legal descriptions weren't quite correct. So it took from 1988 to 1989 to find the discrepancies in the legal descriptions and to correct those. And it took Mr. Olson quite some time to connect the dots as well because it didn't make sense that someone would identify a private road and then not completely describe it. So, that being said, the opinion of August 23rd was the final, and he had his colleague David Lidle review everything as well. So the easement allows for a 25-foot easement through the properties up from the county road, which is the circuitous one. And I have on the left is without the ownership, and on the right, the ownership, so that you can see that it does. In fact, it was planned to pass through lots up there to get there. And then the final connection from the end of Wilderness Road on the very north end, due west into the rectangle of, the subject rectangle. That's a 100-foot right-of-way into which a 30-foot road can be built. And I believe that that was intended because it is so rugged in that area that an exact path is gonna take some time to find, to get passable for vehicles to get to the property. The covenants also have in them, and this is in your packet, and it's from document number 556163 that was recorded on December 29th of 1988. Item 12 says that owners of lots and Phantom Canyon Estates understand and are aware that the clarent owns or may own real property outside of but adjacent to the property included in the descriptions, Exhibit C. Said owners understand that said acreage may be developed for commercial, business, and/or recreational uses, and agree as a condition of purchasing their lots in Phantom Canyon Estates not to oppose the development of said acreage for such uses. So this is an item 12 in the covenants for Phantom Canyon Estates that was recorded in document 556163. So this application was submitted to the Planning Department on June 21st. And I understand and have read the staff report, and I respectfully request, respectfully request that you consider not continuing, but rather approving with contingencies. And I understand I'm gonna go through the staff report, but it has been six months getting this application here. And so it's been continued many times, not formally by you, but it has taken a very long time to get here, and no fault anybody's. It's just been a situation. But to allow them to proceed. Site development. Access needs to be improved as required so that patrons can get to the park. Mr. Lopez began improving the road on October 3rd. The utilities at the site, there will be an onsite, a septic tank. There is an engagement letter that was recently signed with Mr. Ubers and Three Rocks Engineering, and it is anticipated that Mr. Ubers will be able to spin that around along with the drainage plan in approximately 60 days, which falls within the 180-day contingency requirement if it's approved with contingencies. Water. Water in the application says a well, but we all know that water is a challenge. And so in addition to water being a challenge, when the emergency response manager visited the site to see how the, you know, mitigation for wildfires and things, safety issues like that, he suggested 10,000-gallon cistern for firefighting be available. So after some discussion and considering that, Mr. and Mrs. Lopez would like to install a cistern system as opposed to a well, and that kind of kills two birds, satisfies two requirements at once. Electricity, very little electricity will be needed. If... and so they're gonna try to use solar or a small generator because it's just in the member service. This is an outdoor recreation opportunity, and I am not going into the details of what that is. I'm gonna let Mrs. Lopez do that for you. The member service building is the one and only building on the site. It will contain a first aid station, a fire extinguishers. It's a place... the restrooms will be located inside that building, and it is a place to shelter in the event of sudden inclement weather. If somebody gets hurt and they need to get out of the heat, that would be the place they would go, one building. There are two parking areas. You have the site plan, right? Okay. Two parking areas, and the parking areas have been designed with extra-long parking spots so that someone with a truck or a truck pulling a trailer with the mountain bikes on them can pull in directly and not have to reverse back and forth. So it's a pull-through situation. Two types of trails on the site. One are, of course, the bike trails, which really use the natural terrain. They're not a hiking trail or a bicycle-type trail that we see that's cleared of everything. They want the rock, the ruggedness, so that they can traverse the rugged terrain. I don't know what I'm talking about. I don't do this. I don't even know what these things are.
Your Honor.
Okay. I'll play tennis, but I'm not gonna do this. Okay. The perimeter road is on the site plan as discussed with Mr. Kroll as well, to... and it will be developed to accommodate the emergency vehicles and to allow for site maintenance. The gate, the entrance will be gated. Two things... two things specifically in this staff review that appeared November 29th. So, you know, there's been a lot of time, but on November 29th, two documents, specifically the emergency response plan and a wildlife impact mitigation plan, were first mentioned as being required on November 29th. Ms. Lopez has drafted one, and she'll pass that out and talk to that. But Mr. Kroll, in his review, listed the things that are needed to accommodate, to abide by, the emergency plan, mitigation plan for wildlife. The cisterns are a good example. And that being said, if more detail is needed for an emergency plan, I think the Lopezes understand that because of the nature of the use in the recreational activity that a formal plan needs to be sent out to ambulance, fire, sheriff, those people, so they know exactly who to call and how to contact them. However, to have that as a justification for a continuance when it was just stated in a staff report for the first time on November 29th just seems a touch short-noticed. In addition, in the staff report, it says that neither Mr. Greaves nor Mr. Kroll approved the application. So I'd like to direct your attention to Mr. Kroll's remarks, it's in your packet, of September 1st, 2021. And it's in his opening paragraph towards the end, the second sentence. "Mr. Lopez has a great vision for this property and is bringing a new outdoor adventure opportunity to eastern Fremont County. I believe Fremont County, local cities, and businesses will benefit from this project as it grows and the future growth of the project with the vision that Mr. Lopez has planned with possibly a lodge, classes, and events." That seems to me as something that is supporting it, and there is a reference in the staff report that they didn't approve the plan. That seems to support the plan for the use. If I could, I have, this is my first time through this staff report, and I know it's important, so if we could just take a minute to address some of the things that are here. Again, respectfully request that this be approved with contingencies because of the length of time since this application was submitted on June 21st. And the utility plan is very simple. It's a septic tank and a cistern. There's no utility lines. It's all self-enclosed. OWTS, there's a service agreement in place now. The reference to an augmentation plan or substitute water plant is no longer, needs to be considered since it's a cistern. On page six of the staff report, it says Mr. Kroll has not recommended approval, but I read to you his statement, he seems to be. And Mr. Greve of the Forest Service, which was a good, good thing, good eyes, he is the man when it comes to our Colorado forests. His was the access. His was the access, and Mr. Lopez is working on that access. Scenic vistas. Minimal, in 80 acres, one plant, one building, one. They want to maintain the ruggedness, the rocks, the mountains. They want the shrubberies. I guess they maneuver these motorcycles around these things at a very slow pace, and this is fun. Okay. But they do. So, the scenic vista is preserved because very few trees, I mean, I assume if a limb is sticking out next, that would be a safety issue, but they want to preserve that. Mr. Lopez in item 5 is doing improvements to the road. Again, I do respectfully request that this be approved with contingencies as to a continuance because of the amount of time. At this time, I'd like, since I can't speak to what this activity is, I would like to have Ms. Lopez come up and share with you the recreational activity, if you don't already know.
Okay. I think you know, right? Thank you so much, Dr. Bellantoni. I'm Ashley Riley-Lopes, and I am.
Rodrigo Lopez is mine. I just have my card here, too.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I don't want to run out of my card.
Thank you.
I don't think everybody uses business cards anymore.
Thank you.
So, I have the pleasure today, and I'll try to be as brief and clear as possible, of talking a little bit about what Rocky Mountain Way Extreme is and explaining a little bit about what this park will do. So, just for context, Rocky Mountain Way Extreme was started about a year ago. It is a passion project of my husband's, who is a professional hard-enduro dirt bike racer. He's also an agronomist and agricultural engineer. So, I work for the state, as you see on my card, and this is something that he has been dreaming of doing since he was a little boy, which is to support others in exploring the sport of hard-enduro. So, we created this business at the beginning of last year. Our focus was to do race team services, which is we travel around the U.S. and provide support to amateur riders who don't have access to the benefits that pro riders have. We also provide coaching, and so, these are the things that we've been doing over the last 12 months. And so, the property that we purchased outside of Phantom Canyon is really an extension of that. So, it's the ability to offer our coaching and clinics in the beautiful landscape that is here in Fremont County, and to do that in a safe environment. We talk a little bit about in our application, you know, that this sport, there are very few areas to pursue this sport because of the type of rugged terrain that is necessary. We wanted to purchase here outside Phantom Canyon and in Fremont County because we know that, one, the area is pro-business. We have very many clients who live in this area who ride dirt bikes and were interested in us exploring an option of creating a motor park here. So, we would like to use the land or a portion of the land that we purchased to create a park where members could come. They could buy either an annual or day pass and come and safely enjoy the landscape, where it's specifically geared towards extreme hard-enduro riding. And so, what Angela or Dr. Bellantoni was referring to is this is not a sport that is practiced at high speeds. This is a sport that is practiced at extreme obstacles. So, we are talking things that you don't usually think you would ride a motorcycle on, but it is a technical sport, and so, we want the park to be used for hard-enduro and trials. It's a very family-friendly sport. It is a very, you know, healthy kind of lifestyle sport. It is not a fast-paced, injury-prone sport, which is why I'm okay with my husband pursuing this, because a lot of other dirt bike racing, types of racing are high speeds, high injury, and this is not the case with extreme enduro. So, the park would, is geared towards this. We also would like to have mountain bikers feel comfortable and welcome there. We would have kind of the member services building. We want to do clinics. We have support from national and international professional dirt bike racers who are interested in coming and teaching here. We, you know, we have several people from Europe and the U.S. who have already approached us about if the park is able to be open next year, if they could come and teach clinics here for the community. We also, you know, really promote the ideas of safety, and like I said, it's about technique. So, this is not something where we're trying to teach people to ride motorcycles fast or on roads. We're trying to teach people how to climb obstacles and do it safely. Bike trails, I think there's a picture in the PowerPoint. So, this, sorry, this is the ranch. That's my daughter, our daughter, Caitlin, on our property that we were able to access because my husband worked really hard to get access to our property for us to use as a personal use, because we haven't been able to do so. This was the road conditions prior to my husband beginning to work with someone who was willing to let us use their excavator. And this is the post-road you'll see behind my husband and Cody Webb. He's a nationally-recognized professional racer. His documentary came out today. And that's the road that they were able to build behind in the ranch. You can see one of the beautiful vistas there, and we don't want to block any of these beautiful vistas. We don't want to remove any of the natural vegetation or trees that don't need to be removed, except for safety purposes and access purposes. So, we talk a little bit about that also in our emergency response plan.
I'll just pass out. Julie said nine copies, so I think that is correct.
Very much. Did you all get copies of this that came in this morning on the tablets? Did you see these?
No.
Okay. All right.
I haven't been on there today.
Wonderful. Okay. So, the operations of the park, the idea is from dawn till dusk. One of the other reasons why we were so interested in purchasing property here in Fremont County is the weather. So, the fact that it is much warmer here during the winter allows for us to offer training during the day. Here, when the race season is typically in the late spring and summer months, so we're able to offer clinics, training, coaching, hopefully here where the weather is still nice, whereas other areas, it's definitely, we're unable to kind of do our sport. We also have talked about being closed Mondays. Tuesdays through Friday would be fairly low volume, and then, we would have weekends where members would reserve the ranch for use. So, you know, like I said, good weather, safety, the trail preservation. Trails are really only looking at very minimal, I don't know, I think there's a picture in there on, yes, thanks. Minimal changes, as you can see. This is actually, would be considered an easy hard-enduro trail. So, we wouldn't be really changing the landscape very much for trails, other than things that were, like Angela said, sticking out, like branches that might be a safety concern. Again, so, we would be strictly enforcing restrictions on alcohol and substance use. Our family does not use any substances, and the park is supposed to be family-friendly and healthy, so we would not be allowing anything like that. There will be signage posted and strictly enforced. Emergency use of the parking areas, as you'll see in the plan, the idea is to provide access for emergency vehicles as needed and then remove vehicles from the parking area so a helicopter could land in case of urgent medical care. We would have spill kits at the parking areas and the member services buildings. Trying to think, sorry, I'm trying to be brief, but also catch everything. There were some concerns in the staff report about potentially an overlap between clinics and day uses, and we were, yes, we could do that, but we would also have a reservation system so that we would still be within our allotment of use. We also maintained the road, no use during or after inclement weather, and really, like, we see this park as a community resource. So, like I said, the reason why we are so passionate about this sport is we've seen the healthy, you know, benefits it's had on our lives and those who practice it. We have a lot of friends and family and supporters in this region. We kind of wish we had had them come today, since there's lots of people here. But really, we chose Fremont County because this is where our community said they want to ride, and we want to provide a safe, legal, tailored option for them to practice this extreme sport. You know, we are passionate about supporting other small businesses. You know, we would like to eventually relocate and live here on our property, not the commercials part, but the private part. You know, we're hoping to develop relationships with other area businesses. We know that Fremont County has a lot of nationally and internationally-known recreation opportunities already, and we would really like to add to that, especially the fact that our sport would be primarily, you know, highlighted during the winter months. We want to offer that to the community. We plan to offer, we've already talked with several of our clients, our veterans or active-duty service members, and we've already talked about forming relationships with nearby bases so that they could have discounts. We've also talked with some of our supporters who are suffering from PTSD, who have used riding as a way to deal with some of the struggles that they have. We want to offer discounts for veterans. We want to offer student discounts to give positive, healthy activities for the area youth. You know, I'm here to also answer to the complaints in the application. You know, I understand that not everybody's interested in this area being developed in this way, you know, but I'm going to respectfully disagree with some of the accounts in the emails as not being accurate. You know, we did have a clinic on the property when we first purchased the first parcel. We were under the understanding that that was allowed, which was a misunderstanding on our part. We also spoke with neighbors about using their property for that, and were given permission. We also took the county up there after to show them kind of what was there, and we were told that everything looked fine, that we had not left any damage. But in reading a lot of the emails that came in, it seems like there's a lot of misperception about what's been going on. We also haven't used our property commercially since April, and we have tried to use it for personal use, but I'll be, you know, honest in that it is not always comfortable to go there because of a real kind of animosity that we feel from some neighbors about what we're trying to do. It's very unfortunate. We're actually really nice people, but I do feel like sadly, there's been a lot of miscommunication, a lot of misrepresentation. So, you know, we would love the opportunity to calmly and respectfully address the concerns of the neighbors. We would love to be able to put signage so that we can mitigate any concerns about grazing. We come from agricultural backgrounds. Our families were farmers for generations, and we respect that concern. We also respect that, you know, people want to live in peace. So, we would like to be able to put signage regarding speed, regarding grazing, regarding directions, because as was noted in an email, Google Maps doesn't always send you to the right place. But, you know, this summer and ever since April, we have only used our property for personal use. We could not reach our property safely for our personal use until my husband created this road, which was within our legal rights to do so. So, I'm here again to answer any of the questions or concerns from you all about some of those emails. You know, we chose this location also because it would mitigate noise and dust, being it almost three miles away from the nearest neighbor. Anyone who lives near there or anyone who owns property near us uses it recreationally, and some of them only visit one to two times per year. So, you know, we feel like, you know, the impact would be minimal. So, you know, like I said, we're here to explain any questions you all might have. And Angela, I don't know if you wanted to come up, Dr. Bellantoni, and do the conclusion or...
Let the commission ask questions with your questions. Ms. Lopez, right now.
Okay. Go ahead. We'll let Micah get the staff report first, and then we'll get back to you.
Having found the application is deficient and numerous contingencies requested, staff is recommending continuance of the special review, use permit application until such time all required supplemental documents and submitted and approved. And recommendations contained in this report are addressed.
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
And that recommendations contained in this report are addressed.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay, we have a number of people that want to talk. Do you want to hear their comments first, or do you want to take questions, ask questions of the young...
I don't have any questions right now.
The, perhaps, I do have, I do have a question that may help me and may, you know, be germane to some of the comments, but the, Dr. Bellantoni has requested that this be approved with contingencies, and I'm unsure which contingencies you're requesting.
The onsite water treatment, the septic tank, the septic tank and the drainage plan. And the drainage plan, remember, there's one building, so it isn't as if it's 70 acres of change. So, those are the two contingencies. Ms. Lopez just provided the emergency plan, which would have been there. And the wildfire mitigation plan, I've never done that specific to one location. I know the county has one, and it was my understanding that Mr. Kroll's remarks that he submitted September 1 contained the aspects of management that needed to be done onsite. And when you read Mr. Kroll's plan, it talks about the perimeter road, which Mr. Lopez has agreed to. It's in the site plan, the cisterns for development, emergency, the enlargement of the parking areas to allow for a helicopter to land. That's been done, or it's been planned, it's on the site plan. So, many of those items that are in Mr. Kroll's suggestions as our emergency response manager are already addressed in the site plan and then the emergency response plan. So, I have never been asked to do a wildlife mitigation plan, I mean, excuse me, a wildfire mitigation plan, but I know the county has one. And again, we assume that Mr. Kroll made his remarks based on that plan. So, to answer your question directly, because I'm rambling, septic, the OWTS, that, and the drainage, and both of those are, there's an engagement letter with Three Rocks, and the turnaround is no more than 60 days, which falls within the 180-day contingency requirement. Emergency one is done. Wildfire mitigation, that, the comments of Mr. Kroll align with that plan for the county. Those are the only contingencies that I saw as documents to submit.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and allow the comments in the public now, okay? All right. I'm going to take these in the order that I got them. I'm going to ask you to be as brief as possible, and I'm going to limit you to three minutes. Hopefully, you can keep them shorter than that. But Mr. Slater, come on up, please.
Thank you, missionaries.
Can you, tell us who you represent?
I represent Dwayne Bauer. I actually represent more than one homeowner in both Phantom Canyon Estates and Phantom Canyon Wilderness Estates, but for the purposes of this presentation, I represent Dwayne Bauer.
Okay.
And I have a lot of things to bring up, and I'm hopeful that I can get it done in as close to three minutes as I can, but if you cut me off, you cut me off, and I won't be offended. I have a lot of concerns, which apparently staff has already tried to address with this application. This application, I think, is facially deficient on nearly every level. Instead of describing various measures to control a wide variety of issues and problems that are potentially on this site, the applicant just kind of shrugs his shoulders here and says we shouldn't worry about it. For example, there's no dust control measures listed in the application, even though dust is a major issue. Fugitive dust in this area travels throughout the subdivision. I'll tell you, I was up there two weeks ago on a four-wheeler on these roads, and dust was all over the place just from the two four, three four-wheelers we were, two four-wheelers we were driving out there. I imagine many 20 motorcycles out there. The amount of dust that's involved is significant, and the fact that the application ignores that is pretty significant. And the fact that the application ignores that is pretty significant as well. There's no noise control measures, even though you can hear these vehicles from miles away. There's no visual impact control measures, even though the property is part of an area designated in the master plan as a scenic roadway area. And the area was chosen according to the applicant because of its vast scenic vistas. In other words, if you can see miles away, the area that you can see can also see you. And the fact that there's no visual impact control measures is very significant. There's, as has been noted, there's no wildlife protection control measures. And all of these things are on the application as being asked of the applicant to provide. These aren't new things or unusual things. Every application for a special review use permit asks for these things and the applicant has chosen not to provide them. There's no waterway protection measures, even though Eight Mile Creek is a few hundred feet away, even though motorcycle trails are inherently new waterways. And even though they've already proven, if you go up and look at the improvements, quote unquote improvements, they've made to the subdivision roads, what you'll see is that there are drainage areas that they have filled over by several feet without any kind of, any kind of culverts, which are inherently going to create a dam situation when water arrives, and it will, because that's how drainage ways work. And it's going to wash out that road. That's the kind of thing that I think they need, they need more engineering in terms of drainage and waterway protection measures. There's no safety measures, at least not in the application. Apparently they've come up with some since. There's no real fire control measures. The application says they're going to have some fire extinguishers. Well, if that's a fire control measure, why don't we just have a checkbox on the application that says, are you going to have fire extinguishers, yes or no? And then that's all you need for fire protection. This is a real significant risk for forest fires in this area because we've seen it in the past and we're sure to see it in the future. And with machines running hot all over, you know, pretty dry brush, I think there's a very significant risk for forest fire. And that's something that needs to be addressed by this application. There's no sanitation evaluation. Apparently there's now a contract in place, but there's no sanitation evaluation that accompanies this application. There's access issues with the property. If you look at where the road they did build within that, was supposed to be within that 100-foot envelope, much of that road is actually outside of that 100-foot envelope. It's not as indicated on the site plan. The access under the Wilderness Estates covenants is only to owners and invitees, not necessarily licensees. Customers, I believe, would be licensees, patrons would be license, I'm sorry, yeah, licensees, not invitees. And so it violates that in terms of access. In the roadway analysis, they didn't answer question 33. The estimates on road usage are inconsistent with their other plans. On weeks when they're holding clinics, they're easily going to exceed 30 road trips per day average. That would be required to have an engineered road analysis. I would ask the commission to require that they provide an engineered traffic analysis, which they have not yet provided. The number of parking spaces, 25, doesn't jive with the 20-person max they quote unquote anticipate. And finally, this doesn't match with their public statements, that they plan to have ESPN and Red Bull here for national events, which by definition is going to exceed 20 road trips per day or 25 or 30 road trips per day by many multiples of that. There are issues with their compliance with Phantom Canyon Wilderness Estates covenants, which I know that the county isn't about enforcing private covenants. But I think covenants are examples of what the surrounding neighborhood values are. The covenants require approval for buildings. They haven't sought any approval from the association. The covenants require 100-foot setback. Site plan doesn't have 100-foot setback from the boundary line. Very importantly, section six of the covenants provide that the entire area of the covenants, served by the covenants is an open range. They must allow for grazing on their property. There's an easement for grazing. I can't imagine how livestock can coexist with a motorcycle range. But there's an easement, a recorded easement for livestock to roam freely on their property. They can't fence the livestock out according to that easement. I don't understand how this project can exist consistently or at the same time with a livestock easement. They can't cut trees for development except for buildings. I can't imagine how they can cut any trails, even the rough ones they're talking about, without cutting trees. And finally, there's a lot of master plan issues that they haven't really addressed. They haven't addressed in terms of the Northern Mountain area or district of the county. C 1.2, they haven't allowed for any setbacks whatsoever. They haven't allowed for protection of watersheds. The project can be seen from miles away. C 1.3 fails to address the extensive natural vistas that can be seen from miles away. C 1.4 is directly opposite to this project. All this plan does inherently is distort the natural landscape in an area designated for its scenic beauty. And finally, in C 1.5 with respect to cutting and filling, if you look at the contours on the site plan, there's no way they can do what they want without cutting and filling. You have a helicopter pad that is literally 20 feet, 30 feet, 40 feet down on one end. From the other end, a helicopter can't land on a, on a, on a situation like that. You have to fill to create a helicopter pad in those situations.
Can you wrap it up now?
I am done. I think we'll have many other property owners up here talking about what kind of neighbors they've been. I know apparently there have been emails. But in summary, I think it's fairly clear that this application does not fit with this neighborhood, does not fit with this community, and doesn't even fit with the requirements for an application. Thank you for your time and thank you for allowing me to go a little bit over. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ballantyne? Folks, we do have a lot of people that want to speak, so keep it as brief as you can.
It'll be one minute. I represent the homeowners of Red Rocks at Beaver Creek. Seventy-four homeowners, of which approximately 50 are part-time or full-time residents. I just learned of this proposal this afternoon. We're concerned about access. And I didn't see whether the access was off Phantom Canyon or County Road 132. Can I get? 132. So what we're concerned as property owners is the increased traffic on County Road 132 to the point where they would go off onto their private land or through their access. And County Road 132 is a very hard road to maintain. And we're just concerned about its maintenance with increased traffic.
Thank you. Sean Nash? Did I get the name wrong?
I have terrible hearing. It might be Baber.
You're, Shauna Baber, I've got one before that, though. 636 County Road 132? Who is that? Is that you? Did you sign up twice?
My wife signed up as well.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
So I did, we just figured out about this. I'm heard of Red Rocks as well. We have, we have a piece of property that's furted on the road. It's one way in, one way out. So we're deeply concerned about the traffic. I don't know where the actual park is going to be on, you know, I haven't seen the site plan or anything like that. But we're worried about noise because we're talking performance enduro bikes. They're not stock motorcycles. They're not quiet at all. One of the reasons we bought our property up here was for the solitude, the peace and quiet. And so we would like some kind of a noise abatement done. The fire risk is real. I don't think I need to talk about that. But, you know, if those trails are so remote that it's hard for a purpose-built machine like an enduro bike to get up there, what happens if somebody dumps one and it catches on fire? How are we going to deal with the fire, you know, on these back roads or whatever, trails? The environmental impact, I ride a four-wheeler on my property to, you know, maintain my property, check fences, whatnot. And just my four-wheeler, and I don't ride it crazy or anything like that, leaves ruts and creates new drainage paths. And you know how we can get floods out there. Dust, I'm not going to go into it, but dust, it's so bad out there. And I'm a very big allergy sufferer. I'm from Texas. They got a little bit better when I moved here, but now we've got the dust and from the road because it's been dry for so long. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much, I've got it. The road, road maintenance as well, that road is always bad. Like I have, I have a big truck, but it's still bad. So the access into the driveway, there's very little visibility either way. People don't ignore the speed limit, people ignore the speed limit on that road every day. It's a very dangerous road.
Okay, thank you. Eric Kruger?
I didn't know there was so many of you, so I didn't bring enough photographs, but I'm going to try to give you as many as I can. I have a whole bunch of photographs. These are all pulled from the internet mostly and from the site. So I'd first say sorry for your guys' loss. Hey, you know, I appreciate that. I bought property up in Phantom Canyon Estates, Wilderness Estates. And I was, thought I was buying a nice, quiet, peaceful piece of property and I've walked into this. I was elected the chairman of the covenants committee. I notified Rodrigo Lopez personally. He basically told me to F off and that he didn't believe me. I'd notified him again. The police called me and said I would be arrested for harassment if I kept writing him. I did not write him for anything other than asking him for a covenants approval. That's all I did. I can forward all the emails to you guys. He basically did not ask for any covenants approval on anything, which is a problem to me. This whole situation started on the 24th when I was notified by my neighbor someone was trespassing on my property. These set of photographs right here, which I only have, I think, one or two of, you guys come look at. Mr. Lopez and his clients ignored my no trespassing signs. Multiple people went through my property. They opened up the gate to my residence that I have up there, my old cabin. They rode through my residence multiple times. There are multiple pictures of their dirt bike trails. There's even pictures of them cutting trees down on my property. So if you remember back to their, their conversation, they said that their motorcycles aren't fast. They aren't dangerous. I ride enduro, I ride hard enduro. I have a KTM 550. I know exactly what they do. It is very fast, very dangerous. They also said they asked for permission on people's property. They did not. They came onto my property. The photographs clearly show that. They did not notify me. I called Mr. Lopez to ask him what was going on. And he pretty much said that his Realtor, Realtor who I contacted, said that it was public access and he can go wherever he wants. Then he asked me if we could be friends. I told him, no, I don't want him on my property. And he goes, well, then I guess you know what that means. And I said, no, why don't you tell me? And he goes, you'll find out. So the first interaction I had was someone with this threat. He also told me that he did not trespass. Someone else trespassed at the exact same time having motorcycles. I have trail cameras. They are professional bikes with professional numbers on them. I know what they look like. I own one. Then he's like, no, it wasn't us. It was a guy in a yellow quad. The guy in the yellow quad's me. It's my property, my yellow quad on my own property. He's trying to accuse me of trespassing on my own property. This is what I've been dealing with the entire time I've been up there. He built gates on Chris Briggs's property and Mike, right next to Mike Forbes' property, not his own property. There's two, his photographs will show two lots built in the middle of Chris Briggs's property. I personally spoke to Chris Briggs's arbitrator. Chris Briggs is in the Philippines. He's stuck there because of COVID. His arbitrator is Brian Smith. I've talked to every property owner, Brian Smith, the Brown Family Trust, everybody. All of them are opposed to it. Some of them can't be here because they're out of state. All the people that are not here have adamantly opposed to it, so they're going to send emails. Hopefully they did. The Brown Family Trust sold their property to not deal with this. I have been notified as of yesterday that Jim Wildman, James Wildman, has sold his property, just not have to deal with this. This is severity of what we're dealing with. The covenants that they submitted that I have a major issue with, both legally and ethically, that they've, they've done multiple times, was 556163, that they clearly state in their letter as being conveyed with the title, it's a lie. This is the actual covenants. This is Phantom Canyon Wilderness Estates covenants. The provision that they're saying that allows them to do this is not in our covenants. They literally submitted our sister covenants to you and said it. And they can't say that they didn't know because the original submittal had that and they said it was conveyed with the covenant, with the title. I have checked with your county department, had them email me it over. It was 556163 was not conveyed with their title. That one was. If you look on page, there's multiple copies. Page seven, article 12 is completely different than what is in this covenant. This covenant says they don't have the right to post. Ours does not say that. So they submitted a official document that they knew, they had to have known because they, the first submittal before the re-submittal, they had all that documentation in there. Then it changed upon the recent middle. That, in my opinion and my lawyer's opinion, is a direct, a direct attempt to deceive. I have a problem with all this, okay?
Can you wrap it up, sir? I understand.
Okay, so, so we have also voted in new covenants, which will be registered right after this meeting, that expressly forbids any kind of commercial use and any kind of access because they were told by Jim Wildman and myself not to be riding dirt bikes crazy on property. We didn't want dirt bikes cross property. By the way, it is a limited conditional easement access for ingress and egress. Does not, in this right-of-way state of Colorado, is for licensed vehicles only. Jim Wildman told them not to be on his property. Next day, my trail cameras, their pro, Cody Webb, is doing wheelies in front of my trail camera. I also have pictures, which I've showed to Dwayne Bauer. It's, they've expired because they only last so long on the internet. Dwayne Bauer, that they, that somebody, one of the dirt bikers, came up behind his truck, went up to my trail camera, opened up, turned it off. Next day, film crew is there. I put it all back together. It happened the second time.
I need to ask you to wrap it up now.
Okay, okay, so basically I've been dealing with a barrage of lies. I've been threatened by the police to be arrested for harassment. I've been told that I can trespass. Another set of photos that I'll give you is all the, them cutting trees and all their good stuff and then taking down, taking down the trespassing signs. And also they took trail cameras off and threw them off the side of the mountain, which we found.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I am an elected covenant official, so they need to apply to us for approval. If not, we're going to proceed legally. They've told us they're not going to.
Thank you. Okay, Michael Flora?
Lauren.
Flora?
Yes.
Please be sure to keep it brief and leave time for other people to talk.
Yeah, I'll be very fast. So my name is Michael Flora. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. I bought that property to have a quiet place to go to, away from the city. I live in Colorado Springs. I've lived in Colorado since the mid-'80s, right? Since I'm a veteran, I'm involved in a lot of veteran groups. And we do use my property that's 200 acres from time to time to allow veterans to come down and we can talk things through and stuff for PTSD and everything else, right? So I am against it just for a few reasons, right? And I have pictures that, you know, pictures worth a thousand words, right? So we'll go through just two images, really easy. The first map here is going to be their first event. And on the first event, we didn't even know it was happening until it happened. And then afterwards, what we did was look at where the trespassing was, what actually happened. And I tried to create a visual representation that's fairly close, just from one weekend. So in Colorado, property laws and no trespassing laws and all that are extremely important to us because we're buying property so we can use our property in the way that we need to. So this map right here just illustrates in yellow all the paths that we could find on a two-day hiking trip, just trying to find and map out general areas where motorcycles have been ridden, right? And with fresh tracks. In the Marine Corps, I was a sniper and I did a lot of reconnaissance work. So finding trail and sign is pretty easy, right? So I have a second map here. Second map is also pretty easy. Thunder Stan. And on the second map, you have the easement. Now it's 30 feet within a 100-foot corridor. The 100-foot corridor is in blue. And the road actually created is in orange, which is well outside of, is easement. Well outside of easement. Now, I know the terrain there. It would be difficult to stay within the easement. It would be almost impossible to stay within the easement. But I know from living here since, you know, the mid-'80s, if I'm going to do something to someone else's property, I have to ask them, get their permission, and then go ahead and do it. One of the problems is, is no permission is ever asked. It's just done and then the answer is always like, well, tough, right? So if you look at that second map, the gate is in red in the right side of it. The orange is the actual road and the blue is the easement. Now, those are all within probably about 10 feet or so. Oh, I do have a pen drive with drone footage. I own a drone. So I went ahead and droned where all the roads were with the video and images so you could have anybody correlate with cartography or whatnot where the actual road is. So I'm against it simply for trespassing and not doing what is in, within the rules, within the law, right? I don't want people trespassing on my property. And when I first talked to Rodrigo, that was my biggest concern. Look, I don't care what you do on your property, just please don't have people come over to mine. One of the issues you have with ski resorts, right? When you're skiing as a kid, you have no real idea where the boundary of the ski resort is, right? No one ever really does. What does a ski resort do? Put notices all the way around? They create the terrain in such a way where no one can actually leave that ski resort without really trying to, okay? So with that being said, if that work is not done, what else can you do? You're not going to stop a nine-year-old kid to go off your terrain into someone else's without noticing. You're not gonna stop a nine-year-old kid to go off your terrain into someone else's without notices, some kind of visual barrier. And if none of that's there, what are the kids gonna do?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, do you want the pen drive with the images?
I don't think we can access it today, so.
Good deal.
Okay, Michael Macy?
Yes, I own Lot 10 of Phantom Canyon Estates. And yes, in the covenants, it says that the declarant reserves the right to commercially develop. But the declarant is no longer the owner of that property, so Item 12 should be Nolan Boyd, since he gave up that right to commercial by selling it. The second thing is, is the GPS tells people wrong. The only way to legally access Phantom Canyon Road is by 132. The GPS tries to bring people in off of 67, which is not a legal access, and we have people driving all over our properties, trying to find how to get to where they're supposed to go. And I don't want a bunch of people on my property that's just wandering around trying to find someplace. Also, the road out there, even though it's considered gravel, is nothing more than sand and dirt across a pasture. It's one lane, and the vehicles that are gonna access this school are gonna be large four-wheel drives that are capable of pulling a motorcycle up a four-wheel-drive trail, which is what it is. So basically, he's gonna turn our neighborhood into a noisy, congested, busy neighborhood that we all bought property remotely from to get away from. That's all I have.
Thank you. Randy Kidd?
Hi.
Hello.
Say, I'm Randy Kidd. My wife, my son, and I bought a house in Phantom Canyon Estates. Just February, moved in in March. And, you know, we talked about the roads, and I just kinda wanna give you a picture of what that road really is. It's just, it is just a single lane. And when we first moved in there, we moved from an area by, I don't know if you know where Foxman Park is, but we just felt like we were being, you know, the city was coming in on us. And so we paid a premium price for our home out there in Phantom Canyon Estates. And we moved out there to be in Phantom Canyon Estates and buy the Phantom Canyon Wilderness Area, and not the Phantom Canyon Moto Recreational Park. My wife has already expressed concerns after she saw a video of Mr. Rodrigo Lopez fighting with some of the neighbors. She's scared of the man, to be honest. She doesn't walk down to the post, you know, to our mailbox with her grandson anymore because she just senses a sense of hostility in the area. And when you read the GoFundMe site, you can read where it makes us out to be the enemies. I've never met the Lopez's. They go through my property whenever they go up into the Phantom Canyon Wilderness Area where they have their property. On the map, you know, on the pictures, it shows, you know, where it's going through our property. It stirs up all kinds of dust. When we first moved there, that was one of the first things we noticed moving into the house. It was like, "Man, there is so much dust that's kicked up around here." And with 20, 30 more motorcycles going up and down there every day, you know, we have health concerns that we're worried about. My son brought up a really good point that I have no answer for, where he said, "You know, there's a lot of uranium mining in that area." How much of that contaminant is on the soil? How much gets kicked up? How much do we have to breathe in? And is this gonna cause more of a health concern, you know, for us as homeowners in that area? I don't begrudge their business. In fact, when I was a kid, I did Enduro. And I mean, and I enjoyed it. But one of the things that I caution you with, I wasn't alone when I was in high school, when, you know, we had our Scramblers and our Enduro bikes. We would wait for a friend to say, "Hey, I just found a new place." We'd go. None of us checked to see if it was private property. None of us checked to see if it was BLM or whoever else. All we knew is that somebody else had access, and they did it, and it was fun, and we went and did the same thing. You've got, what you're doing is you're opening up this whole area, all that BLM land and everything else, to anybody that finds the next challenge. The next challenge, I didn't do drugs when I was a kid, but boy, I'll tell you, I had an adrenaline high like you wouldn't believe. You know, we made our own hang gliders and parasols, anything that would get a rush. And so if we found something that was more of a challenge, we would go there.
Thank you, sir.
And I appreciate your time, and, you know, again, we're concerned about, you know, health, safety. And I hope you don't turn his dream into our nightmare.
Thank you. Karen Montanez?
Montanez? Good afternoon. My situation's a little bit different. I'm not part of the covenants. I'm one of the very few properties that's private, and we don't have any of that stuff. That being said, like they talked about earlier, the access from 67 GPS takes you the wrong way, and the way that it takes you dead ends at my property. It dead ends at my front door. I have given directions before I realized or knew what was going on or any of that. I've given directions, how to get out and go back over to 132. The main concern I have is my son and my neighbor's two girls, they're all the best of friends and meet in the middle. People are not being courteous of how small these roads are and how fast they're driving. It becomes dangerous, and I don't want to lose that. I didn't move out there so that my son would have to stay in the house, away from dangers and all of that. He's supposed to be able to go out and find the next adventure, and build forts, and meet his friends on the little road, you know, where there's no traffic. And that's not what we're being met with right now. We're being met with the very real possibility of constant traffic, of every single day. Of every single day, my 11-year-old son can't even walk over to the neighbor's house because there's people coming through, that their trucks and trailers having to turn around on our property where it dead ends. So that's a huge concern. We just recently bought this property and found out about a week ago what was going on further up. So we also paid a very premium price, way too much for our house to, you know, and we want to be in peace and quiet. And it seems like we're being met with not quite the dream that we thought we were coming into.
Okay, thank you. Corey Taylor?
Hi there. Thank you. I'm a little nervous, sorry, but I'm here. My husband has owned that property on PCE for 25 years. Where they're, we come up 132, and there's our property right there. They're planning on putting their wilderness stuff right about here. County Road 67 is a rural road that is also part of the Gold Bell Tour. Also, County Road 132 that they have to come up is a scenic byway. When you get to our gate, you're met with a fence, cattle guard, and cattle that freely range on that land. Our concerns are that they're taking their bikes and racing them all the way through Phantom Canyon Estates and going up on Wilderness Trail. And I don't need to remind the board, I'm sure, of their right to farm and ranch policy. I could read it to you. But these cows have been on this land for over 25 years. My husband has owned that property. Every year, those cattle freely graze, and they are parking their bikes down at the corner, or they're, I'm sorry, they're parking at the corner with all their vehicles. And this is after the excavation project. It's on November 20th, and they raced through our canyon. And when they raced through, they're coming up Canyon Estates, they're going down Donridge Trail, then they're going up to Wilderness Estate. Our property, they're going and racing through three sides of our property with those bikes. We did not, you know, establish ourselves on that property to have those bikes going through commercially. This is agricultural land. It's AFC zoned. They even parked their campers at the front gate. Everybody parks down there and then races through the canyon. They talked about not having classes. This is April 24th. They put their signs out at the front of the road. They camp right here on our property on April 24th. This is all on their internet. This is all our land. This is my photo. They blocked the access road for Donridge Trail, and they're on both sides of our property. Their coaching classes and all the money goes to an LLC in Arvedia, Colorado. Doesn't even come here. Costs a lot of money. What is it? Four hours is 300 bucks. They did a coaching class in May, in the last of May, and all the neighbors can attest to it. They raced back and forth on their coaching class in May on Donridge Trail. October 10th, they did coaching lessons. It's all on their Facebook. November 3rd, they brought out their supporters for the GoFundMe account. They brought out all these people out. And the GoFundMe was really bad because it put all of us at a poor light. Did you guys get that in an email about what they wrote about all the neighbors? I'm not sure. I can also read that. On October 3rd, they went through our property right here. They broke our tree with the excavator, blocked our access to our house. They left all the glass on the ground. My husband having to cut that tree before we could even get into our property.
Can you wrap it up pretty quickly, ma'am?
This does not fit with the master plan of B, C, D. I reference Master Plan D 1.7, where it discourages leapfrogging commercial business through agricultural to get away with the land use compatibility. County Road 132 has a one-lane bridge. That's our only way into the canyon and only way out. If he starts doing events, we're worried about the safety. And I think I also showed you the burnt scar. It's very visible from our road. We can see eight-mile fire. And when that fire happened, it came down on 132, and it went all the way over Phantom Canyon. We're really worried about fire. There's no EMS access. I encourage you to really read what Nolan wrote about the fire rescue EMS. He said it would be by ATV or foot. And I really implore you. I just pray that this doesn't come too. The noise has been horrible walking our dogs through the property on leash on 37.5 acres.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, those are all the comment forms that I have. I'm gonna open it up to the planning commission now. You can ask questions of the applicant, make comments here. Sir, I don't have a form from you.
Yeah, I filled out a slip and gave to the lady in blue there.
What was your name?
Mark Hodges.
Okay, come on up. I really need you to keep it brief, though.
Eight-mile fire is why I got a Cistern, a gas-driven pump, and golf course sprinklers on my roof. Fire is a concern. I didn't know about this until I turned around one day and found trucks driving through my horse corrals, right past my front door, and that's how I found out about it. I've been the guy that's been doing the maintenance on that road for 20 years. Dwayne moved in, and I was tickled to death to find out he had a tractor and knew how to drive it, and I've been very grateful for his assistance. But that road is dirt, and when it rains or snows, it turns into a muddy mess. There's only a brief period of time between too wet and too dry where you can manipulate that and smooth it out. This is way too much traffic for me. I'm against it.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I didn't fill out anything out because I didn't know about this, but until I could...
Ma'am, you're gonna have to make it really brief. Come on up and identify yourself. Ma'am, ma'am, you addressed your comments to us, okay? Not to them, okay.
Anyway, the Fremont County Department, Susan Claxton. I own 3325 County Road 132. I have 132 to the east of me, and their private road runs all past my horse barn, my tech room, and my horse pasture. So I know about the dust. It's already there, okay? Anyway, they filled this form out, the roadway impact analysis form, and it says that you have to have under 30 proposed trips up to your property per day, and that means one way, okay? So that's, that's, and then you don't have to have an engineer to inspect County Road 132 and see if it can handle more than 30 extra cars or extra trips. And so they filled it out. They're only gonna have 26 trips, I think. But they have 52 drive-through parking spots proposed, and that doesn't add up. And the other thing is when it asks on this questionnaire about County Road 132, "Do you see any potential hazards?" And they said, "No." And you look at a one-lane bridge, and that's what it is. It says narrow bridge, but it's one lane unless it's two Volkswagens. And they said, "No." I think that's misleading.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, talk to me.
I have a question for staff.
Sure.
The, the, so we've received some testimony that there, if I understood it correctly, that there has been some road construction between the period of September and November. Has there been a further site inspection since the August 25th inspection?
No, sir, there has not.
So we do not, so, so staff does not know whether addition, new construction has been started up there or not? Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. I can tell you that when we did send somebody up there, I was told that the road was so bad that they had to park the truck down below and have Mr. Lopez drove her up, or they walked up it, or something like that. But no, we have not been up there since that.
The, and I have an additional question about the August 25th. We've, we've heard testimony this afternoon that there were, there were commercial activities, perhaps, being conducted out there in April. And so, do you know, did the August 25th site inspection identify any current commercial uses of the property?
I don't believe so.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I have a question for Angela. So the two different covenants that we're talking about, the one that I was giving was Phantom Canyon Wilderness Estates. And I'm not sure which one is in our packet. I've been trying to find it. Do you want to address the difference in those two packets?
So I gave all of those documents because there are two sets. He's absolutely correct. There is the Phantom Canyon Estates covenants, and then the Phantom Canyon Wilderness Estates covenants. Two separate documents, and I'm not that smart.
Okay.
That's why we hired Mark Olson, the attorney, and he reviewed and researched all of those and conferred with the surveyor regarding the, well, the first slide that shows the outline of where the access road, the 25-foot circuitous path, comes in off of County Road 132. So yes, there are two sets, but I relied on our attorney's opinion to sort through that, Commissioner. I would like to address, could I clarify the roadway impacts? So the average, it's, it's average trips, and CDOT's average trips are average trips per year. And so that accounts for being closed in Clement weather, and as they said, the road does deteriorate quickly, and they respect trails because you don't want to use these vehicles on trails that have been impacted by weather. So when you average the use over 365 days, then that is the calculation that came up. Okay.
I apologize. I can't answer your questions, sir.
Larry?
I don't know where to begin. One thing, and I know it involves the agenda criteria for special review use that we have to adhere to. And as such, there's a number of items that have to be okayed by us. And this has already occurred and been done. Couple of them, location of the property used is compatible, harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. Well, with the complaints that we're getting, I don't know that that's occurring. Also, the proposed use, if it complies with all the conditions on which approval is made contingent, will not adversely affect other property in the vicinity or general health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the county and will not cause significant air, water, noise, or other pollutants. And the way it sounds to me, it's, it's going to be a problem with that. Approving the SRU based on what criteria that we have to adhere to. That's just one item, I don't know.
Well, I have to agree. I think of all the applications I've seen, this one satisfies the criteria probably less than, than any I've ever seen. It'd be really hard for me to vote for this.
Just, just on general principles, I mean, without going into staff reports or that sort of thing. It's one thing that we have to adhere to.
I know. There are so many issues, access, fire hazard, water, the inability to, to conduct the tests that are necessary for us because of the access issues. There are so many things here that if I'm either looking at voting against it or continuing it, but the applicant does not want us to continue it. In fact, they're looking for an up or down vote today. And Gardner, what do you think?
This is really tough. I have been riding motorcycles and their bikes for 55 years and own six right now. So I understand your, what you're trying to do. I also understand the problems that they can create, especially in this environment with dust and with the way noise bounces, though I know the motorcycle industry's been on a less sound, more ground motto for 30-plus years. So, but this is a toughie. And I don't know that we can go forward today where we are until we mitigate some of these issues.
I will say that if we, if we do continue it, if we table it, we can only do that for, for one meeting, and it has to be addressed at the next meeting. And I don't know if these issues can be resolved in 30 days.
I don't think so.
But you might want to talk to your client.
All right.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Lopez would like to know what address, what action would you like them to address? If it were to be continued in the next 30 days, what issues would you like them to address?
Well, there are multiple things that the staff listed in, in their report. I'm sure you have that report, but just...
Well, I have the OWTS and I have the drainage plan. And would...
Okay, we're talking about the soil reports, you know, for...
That's for the OWTS.
Okay, all right. And the water issue?
The water is a cistern.
We have the, well, the neighboring complaints. I haven't heard those addressed really myself, okay? Now, I'm just speaking off the cuff without having everything in front of me right now. But there are multiple things here that need to be addressed of the...
The access road?
The access road, yeah.
Whether or not it's in, within the 100-foot where it's supposed to be? And also which covenants?
So we are of the opinion that that has been addressed. It's just they don't agree with. They don't agree that it has been, but we've provided legal documentation and consulted an attorney that says that we are within our legal rights. We provided that to them also. And so we are of the opinion that we are within our legal rights and we've had that checked and reviewed. The only reason we obtained a copy of the covenants that are accurate is because the neighbor that sold us the property provided them to us. So we asked several times of the neighbors if we could have copies of documents that were current and that showed that we had an easement, and no one could provide that. We also contacted Mr. Briggs and his business partner who lives here in the state. We drove to his home because no one would give us his phone number to call him. So we drove to his home and asked if he could talk to us about our easement, if he was okay with what we were doing. He said that he would think about it and let us know. He never contacted us. We tried to contact him again. He wouldn't give us his phone number. So we sent him a certified mail saying that we were going to move forward and this was our plan. If he had any concerns, so please contact us. He never contacted us. And so we moved forward with our legal rights to, to create that access road. So whether or not, you know, we have an SRU, we do want to access our property for personal use. And that's why we created it. You know, and to address the neighbors' concerns, I totally understand that this is new and different. And, you know, dust is, is definitely a concern, except for the fact that we would like to pass through other people's properties and not stay on anyone else's properties, but to be able to get to our own and to enjoy our own property and like our customers to do the same. And so I think that would help. Signage, I think, would help tremendously. So being able to, people not get lost, people not be speeding, people be advised of grazing, people be advised of private roads. The reason we put signs when we did the one clinic that we know was wrong and we apologized and haven't used it for commercial property was because we didn't want people driving on private roads. And we were asked to remove those, so we did remove those as soon as we were asked to. So we're trying to be friendly and compliant. We want to give you everything you need. We just want to know exactly what you need so that we can do it correctly and follow the process. So if we, if we're working with Three Rocks for the OWTS, the drainage plan, you know, we're not constructing anything that would block anyone's vistas. All you can see is a trail from the road potentially. Well, there's trails on other people's properties, too. So that's just a personal use potentially issue. So I guess we're, we understand people are concerned and upset. We understand that people have, our emotions are high. But I just want to clarify that some of the things that were said today are just one side of the story. And so there's been talk about pictures and videos. Some of those things were from the April event and were not actually our doing. They were there when we arrived. We brought the county up in August, and she also confirmed that we had not damaged anyone's property or any BLM property. I just want to personally take responsibility for this video that's been alluded to where my husband is very upset with a neighbor. It is because I was not comfortable accessing our property for several months. And my husband encouraged me to come up and actually hike to our property so I could see it for the first time without a road. And our car was surrounded by several vehicles and four-wheel-drive vehicles while we were hiking. And I, I felt extreme, I felt extremely, extremely threatened and scared, very emotional and crying. I fell down the hill and my husband was very upset because his wife basically was saying, "I'm scared to come here. I want to work with everyone. I'm a nice person. I'd love to have a conversation." It breaks my heart that someone would think that they couldn't check their mail because of us. But he is also defending his family and our daughter. So it's not your problem. You shouldn't have to deal with it. We'll do whatever you ask us to do. We just ask that you please understand that. We want to, we want to be in compliance, so...
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Micah?
Can I just stop for one minute?
I'm sorry?
One minute?
Go ahead.
So this is the, I framed this map here on this building with an engineer.
Can you hold it for me?
Here, hold it up. I'll hold this side over.
Here. All of the one, you hold it up.
Look, my property is like this, one lot, two, three, four. Here, 87,000 acres of BLM and nobody lives there. Here, it's like thousands of acres, nobody lives here. I chose to build a middle of that to not bother anybody. I understand the concern on dirt, but the sound, mine is on the top of the mountain, so the sound goes up, doesn't go down. The dust stays on the canyon, doesn't go anywhere. That's exactly why I bought this property. Plus the weather and the friendly people in Canyon City. And I know you guys want to develop like a motor, motor sports here in the county. I heard that before, so... Because these projects are supposed to be in Denver and Boulder. I brought here. Many people asked me to bring here. I brought here.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right, Micah, do you want to address some of these issues? Do you think that this could be resolved in the next month, all the issues that staff has?
I wish I could give you a clear answer on that, but I really don't know if it can be resolved in 30 days. I just received the emergency plan pretty much 24 hours before this meeting started. So our emergency plan, Michael, hasn't even had a chance to look at it. I do believe that there are a lot of concerns. I just don't know if it could be done in 30 days or not. So I think that's really all I can say. You got to understand, I came in kind of in the middle.
Sure, I understand. Yeah, you've, you've had a lot handed to you.
I would love to say yes, and I'd love to move on with them and try to get this thing just settled, no matter which way it goes. So I wish, I wish I could give you a better answer than that.
Okay, all right.
How about this? It's, is a 30-day continuance, okay? And they've engaged Three Rocks, okay, for those things, the cistern. It seems to me that the dust and road issue is the access road, not necessarily, as Rodrigo showed you on the map. It's not necessarily his trails. It is the vehicle traffic from County Road 132 up. So perhaps if there was a, whether it's from Three Rocks Engineering on how best to improve that road, what would be some dust mitigation, what would, might be some drainage issues? I heard something about drainage on there as well. So maybe there's a roadway development memo from Three Rocks Engineering and then some best practices. And perhaps this document could be disseminated to the neighbors. But again, there's a third-party engineer looking at the road. Because I keep, I think the access road problem, and I hear the Highway 67, that's a big problem, but signage is going to fix that. And signage can't be posted until this is approved. So we can't fix the problem until we have an approval. So those things in 30 days, we may, you don't think so. Mr. Brown doesn't like it.
I don't think so.
So, but I, I, I do have a question that maybe help, help bring some light to the subject. But Micah, is there a list? You know, in the other matters that we're considering this, this afternoon, for each contingency, there's, there's a numbered bullet that, that spells out the contingency. Is there, you know, and the staff report we have refers to numerous contingencies. Is there a document that lays out each contingency that staff has identified that needs to be addressed?
No, sir. It's basically what's in the report and then basically any contingencies that you all would also maybe deem that would need to be in there. So I, maybe we should have had that whole list, sorry.
So it, so it, the, to me, it's awfully hard to, to make a decision without understanding for sure what, what our staff is recommending as a contingency to us for the, for this particular proposal. And that, it would seem to me that that would be something that, that, that if staff could prepare such a document that may provide a path to move forward, I would hate to, you know, to, to deny the application based on, you know, kind of perhaps a vague or perhaps not real specific contingencies that the applicant has had a chance to review and address. And so that, those are my thoughts as we sit up here.
Okay, you have one other option from my reading of our, of our rules, regulations. If, if before we make a motion, you choose to continue to work with staff, okay, on this, that would give you up to 90 days instead of 30 days. That's, is that correct, Brenda?
Yes.
That would be before we make a motion here today, though. So you would have to decide on that. If you want to continue working with staff and get that cleared up with them, that would give you more time than us making a motion today.
And that gives us 90 days.
Yes.
There we go.
Because part of the problem, you know, if we could continue it for 30 days, but we don't have 30 days.
Exactly.
That staff has got to get that information to us two weeks before the meeting.
I hear you.
We'd only have two weeks to get all that stuff together. And I don't know that they could do it in that period of time.
And I sympathize because the staff report, November 29th, brought things to my attention that weren't asked for prior to that. And I had one week, so I get that. And I appreciate that suggestion, Commissioner Hammerick. Thank you. Where did you find that? I want to find that.
Actually, Brenda sent me something. I had to ask her, but it's in, I forget what, what's that document, Brenda?
It's some...
Yeah, it's, I've got a copy of it here. I'll find it for you in a minute.
It's fine, it's fine.
So if you want to withdraw and continue working with staff, we won't make a motion today.
So just so I understand then, and we would be reset. We would rework, resubmit an amended application, reset a hearing, a public meeting here, pretty much redo. And in that 90-day period, make every effort to become very good neighbors, address the access. But Director Simpelman would come up with a bulleted list so that we know what we're talking about. And perhaps we sit down and have a meeting with you as soon as possible to concur on the, on the topics.
I think that's the best route we have today, but I'm, I'll listen to Brenda, though.
Yeah, under the regulations, if you do a vote to continue for, to the next regular meeting or no more than 40 days, which is what the record said, by consent of the applicant, you can continue it. It's passed that. The regulations are written, giving an outside of 40 days. If the applicant objects to a continuance, you can't go more than 40 days. With the applicant's consent, you could go two years if you wanted to.
Oh, okay.
So if there's agreement, then you can extend past that 40 days in the regulations.
So they can pick?
They can pick a timeframe.
Once it's, they choose. Then we'll pick 90, and if we can get it done before then, that's a good thing. Okay.
Ma'am, it could even go, it could even go longer than 90 days from what...
Should we get to that point?
Yeah, but it's best and it's clear on the record if you do a motion to continue for the time period that the applicant's requesting. And you have authority to do that because you got consent from the applicant.
Okay, the 90 days would put us at, at the March 1st meeting, okay? It has to be on a date that is a regular meeting date, okay?
We're allowed to come early if you're available.
Well...
If issues are resolved.
If the issues are resolved, we can submit.
Sure.
Correct.
Okay. Are we, are we all in agreement that this might work?
It's to be motioned.
A question in the bag.
Yes.
I'm going to be on behalf of covenants. Except, let me, in the year of covenants, couple things. One, I have a question. You guys have an engineer study on the road because there's going to be high traffic. Number two, if you look at those photographs, I'm going to check where it's their website. They are referencing multiple classes they had in October, November, that were commercial classes of clients. It's a clientele, clients, and coaching. You can go look it up on our website yourself.
Okay, sir, okay, that's enough.
The last thing I say, there is a new covenant that will spring that is coming into motion. I will have to hear tomorrow, so I will go there.
Aren't they grandfathered in under the old covenants?
Yes.
So those are...
The covenants works, the covenant works as once it's actually...
Okay, I'm going to cut off the, back there, okay? All right, okay. I think we have a plan here.
Yes.
So I think I'm open to a motion to continue this to the March 1st meeting.
So moved.
Subject to earlier setting if it's ready.
Subject, okay.
Yeah, subject, subject to earlier setting if, if you guys are ready, yes. Up to 90 days.
Awesome.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Second, second. Any further discussion?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I hope you guys can all get in. Okay, I hope you guys can all get in, please try to work with your neighbors out there and maybe set up a meeting, you know?
You know, honestly, that's what I would suggest. If you guys, excuse me, if you guys could get together with some of the owners and find out what their particular problems are, maybe you can work some of the stuff out. You know, beforehand.
We'd like to be invited to the meetings. They have them and they don't let us know.
When I get ten letters.
I know, sir, no, I understand. We'll be sending, though, our supporters and other neighbors who've experienced similar harassment, we'll also be sending letters promptly to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Angela? Back to this. Keep that. That's where I found that.
You're earning money. We have to comply to this. Do you have a copy of this? No, no, do you have a copy of this? Is there any way through this?
Okay, we're going to continue, folks. Yeah, could we have you guys step outside? We're going to continue the meeting. Okay.
Are you up next?
She's up again, yeah. I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay, folks, let's bring our meeting back to order, please. We have item number three today, Phantom Canyon RV Ranch, major modification. Go ahead, Dr. Bellantone.
Who are you? Hi, good, it's almost evening.
You've got nine minutes, go.
I vote we approve. Okay, today, we've been here before. We have with us Mitch Leighton, you've been seen, and the new partner is Saagar Singh, and he will be speaking to us if we wish. Just history, March 10th, we were here, you weren't. County Commissioners were unanimously approved. The contingencies were submitted to the Planning Department on August 20 of 2020, and there was a return receipt email from then Director Garrett. On April 13th, the project was brought back before the Board of County Commissioners because of some challenges. And they have been on the effort to be good and faithful stewards of the special review use permit. On April 29th, much like Director Simpelman is going to do for us in Rocky Mountain Way Extreme, there was a meeting. And dear Mr. Saunders was there, Director Garrett was there, the applicant was there, and the discussion was what needs to be done to fix this. First thing on that was that the applicant was not to do anything to the property until such time as a major modification application was submitted and went through the review process. So through the staff report, the reviewer, the writer repeatedly says things weren't done. Right, because they were told not to do them until the major modification was complete. Okay, so just, there seems to be a problem there. The major modification was submitted May 24th, and we're here today. The change to this is to add twenty spaces to the existing forty spaces, to extend the lease to allow for up to eighty-nine day stays, it was much shorter then, and to add, oh, that's very nice, a designated RV storage area so that when patrons no longer are going to stay at the site and they go back to their real lives, they have a place to park and pull out of a space. So site improvements are the twenty spaces, utilities, to each RV hookup is water, sewer, and electricity. The interior road is recycled asphalt and gravel. And what they found over the last year and a half is, gosh, that's really bad dirt out there. And gravel doesn't go anywhere but down. And so they are experimenting with and have found that the asphalt combined with the gravel layers has made a decent roadway. They are now, recall in the SRU, you approved, they had a two-year window to build their bathhouses. So that was found not to be on the site plan for the one that was approved. So we had to modify the site plan in a way to put the bathhouse on there. And then to accommodate the sixty spaces and the bathhouse, there's actually three OWTSs on it. There is, the site is overseen, not only by the owners, of course, but for what we've talked about before as host campers that agree to perform a certain service in exchange for a reduction in their spacing. This happens at US Forest Service sites as well. In addition, and this is something that the owners have learned over the last almost two years or year and a half, is that they do need a security person. They need somebody who is there and aware. So they have established two security sites, one up by the check-in. Shed. Check-in shed in the northeast corner and one down in the southwest corner away. And those are just spaces. The staff report refers to a park model. No, it is just a space with septic hookup, with water hookup, with electrical hookup that the host camper who chooses to perform that duty will pull their rig in their RV there and park for the, that's, this is much like those emergency seats on the airplane where the attendant comes and says, are you willing to perform these duties in the event of an emergency? It's just like that. You go and you, that's where they were sitting. So the park model thing isn't what's.
How did that get in there?
It was just, it just appeared on November 29th. Prior to November 29th, I hadn't ever seen it. It did take some, anyway, next. Also in the staff report, this storage area for the RVs. The drafter of the staff report wants to call it a contractor's yard. A contractor's yard is used for a general contractor, oil well driller, excavation contractor, landscaper, or building contractor. Definition does not include temporary job construction site. So none of those things are what the purpose is for this gated fenced area. But if we look at accessory building or uses under definition 1.5.2.1, it says that an accessory building or use is a building or use which, point one, is subordinate to and serves a principal use. There it would. Two, is subordinate in area extent or purpose to the use, same here. Point three, contributes to the comfort, convenience, or necessity of the occupants. Happens to, and four, is located on the same lot as a principal use. So there is a definition under 1.5.2 of accessory use. Also, in addition, in the definition of a trailer travel trailer park, 1.5.1.7.6, it says any open area other than a street, alley, or other public place used exclusively for parking or temporary storage of two or more trailers. That's what this is. So the staff report, and this also just showed up on November 29th, says to use a contractor's yard and goes through requirements there. I don't, I think there's a better fit. I think the accessory use is a better fit and also even in the definition of a travel trailer park. Next is the parcel boundary has been a quandary since day one. And it has been twenty-nine acres, or it's been sixty-seven acres, and twenty-nine acres and sixty-seven acres. And so I guess in this review now, on November 29th, it's back to sixty-nine acres. And yes, yes, okay, fine. We will make it whatever needs to happen here for the sixty-nine acres for the approval. Contingencies, I just want to under, so contingencies, the requirement in the code is that contingencies are completed in a hundred and eighty days, correct? Okay. And then, once it's completed, whatever day, or shorter, once that's done, then the resolution is recorded, correct? Is that how that goes, or am I, are I confused?
Contingencies have to be completed before the use can commence.
Understood. I'm talking about, the staff report keeps using recordation of the special review use. That's the phrase that's being used.
And I'm not familiar with holding up recording of the SRU for the contingencies. But apparently that's a new practice. Micah?
I don't know. I don't know.
Yes, that's what we were requesting, that they be met before we record it.
Okay, so now we're back to the thing that contingencies are given a hundred and eighty days to complete. So at what point is the SRU recorded? Because it talks about in the staff report, recordation of the SRU. I need to know when my, when my, my.
The hundred and eighty days depends on the date of approval.
And then when is the SRU recorded?
Once all the contingencies have been met.
Okay, so we are back to the beginning, that there's contingencies, then there's a hundred and eighty day max. Max, can be done sooner, can be done sooner, yes, can be done sooner. Then, then it's recorded?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, so I need to look at this because this has been confusing for me as well. I apologize, I'm hurrying. Okay. All right, staff is prepared. Sixty-seven point nine seven acres. The applicant has suggested that the tracking device, they've agreed to a cattle guard. That was in the application at the access for tracking purposes. And now the staff reports discusses needing a paved entrance.
It looks like they put the asphalt all the way out to County Road 67. It looks in pretty good shape.
Well, it'll be the way, whatever you tell us, we will.
Okay, they're, they're easy, they're easy.
So if arranged, you're not going to track anymore.
Oh, exactly, somehow, whether it's cattle guard or concrete, okay, or, okay. Staff, here, page seven of the staff report, here's one of these that I'm confused about. Staff recommends that all internal roadway construction and site improvements be built pursuant to the site plan within four months from the recordation of the special review use permit. That means ten months from the day of approval maximum. That's how I read that. Do I misunderstand that, Micah? I'm on page seven, second full paragraph of the staff report. Lastly, staff recommends that.
You're on page seven, you said?
Yes.
Second paragraph down.
Do you see that? I just want to know the timing. Are we, it says recordation of the special review use permit.
Okay, so some of them were giving you a timeframe to get it done before we record it. And then like this one is going to be after it's been recorded.
And then we're back to the question of when is it recorded? It's recorded upon completion of the contingencies.
When, so the contingencies are kind of clear. It says which ones need to be done prior to it being recorded and the ones that need to be done afterwards.
Okay, so this particular one, and we're good with this, I just want to be clear because there's been so many challenges with this project, we just want all the i's dotted. Okay, if we go down to lighting, and, which is the next paragraph. The contingency to require the pole lighting approved under the governing SOU be installed within one month of recordation of the special review use permit. I don't know if any of you have tried to get an electrician. You can get in queue and you can pray, but you are at their mercy. So the applicant is willing to provide email proof documentation of the communication of the anticipated date of completion of the pole. But whether or not the applicant is able to actually set the pole within one month of recordation is outside of their control. It is with Black Hills and the electrician. But they will make every effort to get everything rolling that they can, and I'm going to suggest to them that they nag like crazy, if possible, if it doesn't upset anybody. So that particular one-month limit is really beyond their control. Two paragraphs.
They'll take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you, thank you. The next one down, two paragraphs down, as such, the staff recommends that the cut sheets be provided and included in the site plan. A cut sheet is between the electrician and the power company. I get these all the time at mine sites when we set a pole. It's not something that's recorded as a site plan. It's an engineering document that the electrician gets regarding the layout of the utility, the panel, I'm not using the right word. It's approved by the electrical engineer, it's submitted to the power company. The power company has to install it in accordance with this and then the state electrical inspector, inspection according to the cut sheet. But this cut sheet is an engineering document that I have never seen recorded or included on a site plan. So I respectfully request that one be removed. I mean, every power pole has to have one, and I've never had one recorded in an SRU. The next paragraph down, oh, they're good with that. I didn't say that. Next, on the very last, this is an example at the bottom of page seven, very last sentence. This has not been met as of November 22nd. And this is the moving forward with the chemical toilets in the bathrooms. Well, they're not supposed to do anything. They are going to build the facilities and then remove the portable toilets as required. But again, they were told to wait and not make any progress until the major modification. Now, had things not gone upside down at the Planning Department, I'm sure that they would have been here July getting approval, and this would be done. But because this delay, we're here today. Electrical outlets are not a problem. They are changing the recreational space, that is not a problem. They're going to label it on the site plan, that is not a problem. The density is going to be changed. We already talked about the security spaces. Okay. Already talked, I apologize, this is very thorough. And because this has been such a challenge, we don't want to get upside down. So regarding, now I'm not going to go there. Let's see, I'm on page 10. I'm on paragraph four. Electrical service provider, Black Hills. The SRU plan needs to depict electrical outlets, it already does. The one hundred and ten volts are already on the plan. And they're okay with the eight-foot lead, oh, here's one, bottom of the page 10. So it is being required regarding the south perimeter, the south boundary. And April 29th, initially, the trees were going to be planted on the east side. Then it was decided that the berm and the trees are not going to get along because of roots and it's going to compromise the berm over time. And so it was recommended, actually, move it to the south because that neighbor doesn't seem to like to look at the RV park. Okay, that sounded like a really great idea. So the decision was to put the trees along the south. Now, unfortunately, in the site plan. Now, unfortunately, in the site plan, apparently, there are 13 trees. Those were just placeholders. We don't know the size of the crown of the mature tree. And also, in this particular case, whoever drafted this staff report, on the top of page 11, it says, "Exact species of the tree." That's a bit difficult. A, the dirt is gonna be a challenge. Two, these guys may have to replace these trees to get a successful grow, many times. Let's pretend that they choose to do an ash. There's a purple ash, there's a golden ash, there's a red ash. And they may find that purple, which would be a species, doesn't work. So if I provide a species of purple and it doesn't work, now they're out of compliance with their SRU conditions. So, the intent was trees along the south boundary. But a species, a genus, we can get there. Even a family, deciduous non, we can be there. But the exact species and how many? Because the spacing between the trees is dependent upon the size of the crown and the root system. So again, those 13, that was just to show that they're going to establish a tree.
I think we can work with that, make the genus good.
Could you? Okay. And they're probably, well, anyway. Roadway construction, we're okay. We're okay. Yes, I will, roadway impact analysis, I will redo that. So, if we go to the summary, page 13. I bet you didn't know I was there already, did you? I'm a speed reader. 69 acres is number one, we got that. Number E, did you wanna do the 10 years or no 10 years?
Oh, uh, no, we don't want the 10 years.
Alright, so, condition E says that, uh, the trailers, there's an age limit. So the reason the applicant is requesting not is rebuilds. People take 20-year-old Airstreams and refurbish them. They, the applicant, and I'll let them speak to how, what criteria they use to inspect their patrons' units. But that 10-year age limit, they would like that to be removed. But they, you can continue to say in good condition, however we wanna represent it.
How was that determined?
I'll let them talk to that, okay?
Alright.
And item four, which is back to the security RVs, which isn't- Item seven, this is again now here, is one month. We're back to the contractor thing. So, they can make every effort to get in queue with an excavator, with the concrete guy, making sure the supply guy has the bolts that can get to the site, but, and a contractor to build the bathrooms. Even the septic tanks. And they will make every effort to do that, yes. But this one-month limitation, again, they can get, that's the other thing, is they're willing to go get permits right now. If you do a recommendation to approve, they're going to assume that the county commissioners are gonna go with it, but they're gonna take the risk. They will go apply for all the permits they need immediately. And then they're in queue, and they can go secure the contractors. But whether or not the contractors are gonna get there, that is outside of their ability. Okay, cattle guard tracking, we talked about the cut sheet, which is number 10. Okay.
Is that the blue rooms we were requesting?
That's what we're gonna remove. No, that's building the toilet, the bathroom.
But if you're trying to remove the blue rooms, I have to build a septic system.
Right, yeah, we can't-
Build a septic system.
Right, we, and-
There's some requirements for, for my bit of it.
But we have septic.
We have, we're okay, we're okay. Okay.
I feel the same way.
So, so-
I'm trying, I'm trying. This is, this is new, this is new territory for me. Okay? Yes, Ms. Commissioner Hammerick?
So, the, you do have, you do have the staff report, and you do have the recommended, um, contingencies. You're asking for the removal of E.
Yes, sir.
Any before that? Any, any-
Prior to that? No. No. Everything before that is okay. And actually, we're not, um-
Is seven, is that correct?
Item number seven. Seven has that one-month thing.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
So that is, that is, that, that's a problem for your applicant, and you're asking for some modification of that.
Yes, please.
And then you're asking for deletion of number 10.
Yes, please.
And you're asking for a modification of number 11.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're asking for modification of number 20.
Uh, 19 and 20 both talk about a species.
19 and 20, species. Yeah. Okay. Is that it?
And a partridge in a pear tree.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, so, so I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The, if the contingencies that we approve, that has, that references a one-month period, if we change that to shall be completed prior to commercial operation, is that acceptable?
So, so the, the challenge is that it's already in operation. These are modification, this is a business right, this is a major modification. So this isn't a, a, an opening door.
Gotcha. What would you suggest?
Help me here.
Okay, I'm sorry, what's the, what's the question?
If it hasn't addressed the one month regarding the toilets.
Okay, we can re-
You're not the top. Oh, that's a good idea.
Okay. How, so, what? How about-
Just need to break the tension a little.
I can sing another Christmas carol if you'd like. Okay. How about, it is prior to the use of the new 20?
Of the new 20 spaces?
Yes. Because that's what this is all about anyway. So you cannot begin use, that's your trigger. You cannot begin use of the 20, the new 20, until this is done. That was a good idea, wasn't it?
So that, it would read then, "Construction of the unisex bathroom," for instance, at number seven.
Okay.
"Construction of the unisex bathroom service building and subsequent removal of the chemical toilet shall be completed within, uh,
Prior to-
Shall be completed prior to use of the new 20 spaces.
Yes.
And that would be, that would go for number 11 also?
The problem with 11 is we gotta get it in there ASAP.
Okay.
And, and that's for the whole thing.
I'm sorry, I have a problem with that because if it takes you five years to build
Oh, no.
The bathrooms, I'm sorry, they haven't built them yet, it's been a year and a half. So I do, I would like a date on the bathrooms being built, not just prior to whenever they feel like finishing the 20 spaces. There, there needs to be some kind of date.
I hear ya.
You, you have applicant, you've got people out there right now that could use those bathrooms.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and recall that the first SRU, it was two years with approval, and that was March 10th. So technically, the bathroom is supposed to be done prior to March 10th of 2021. Did you know that? I read that.
21 or 22?
22.
22, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Technically, that's the reality. And so, so-
I'm happy with that date.
Are you?
Yeah.
I think we should stick with that. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I agree, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No, that's, that's-
We can do that, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we should stick to that.
You wanna do that? Okay, but let's go back to, let's, can, two years. Was that, was it March 10?
Well, we're just staying with the original SRU compliance.
Okay, we're staying with the two years allowed in the original SRU.
Just for clarification, I'm sorry. Wyatt, if you're not backed up in your department, you can get us a permit and approve plans within a month.
I can get your plan 24 hours if you pay for it.
Man, there you go.
We're good.
Okay, all is good. All is good.
Let's move on.
Move on.
We're good.
Okay.
Same date.
Okay, so power poles. I think that works for us.
Okay.
So, power poles.
Okay, oh yeah, we're now, now we're at the power pole. How do we do that one? Technically, technically, back to this timeline with the 180 days for contingencies, it's seven months if you do that. If you max out your contingency timeline, which I don't like deadlines, so that's not. But again, we're back to the queue thing. What do you think, Micah, what?
120 days.
120 days.
Six times 30 is 18, right?
Yeah.
Four months, four months is-
120.
In a normal world, I don't think this would be a problem. But in today's world of supply chain, power and people and employment, so, my husband's a contractor, as you know. We had a house on Twinflower. Do you know what the last thing was that we got done on that house? Setting the power with Black Hills Energy. And it was requested five months in advance. And I got to nag them. You just nag and nag and nag, and I had to get in queue. And it was COVID, it was supply, it was whatever. And I did the best I could. We waited two months to sit a temporary pole. So, it's Black Hills.
So, so on number 11, Micah, the pole lighting approved under the governing SRU shall be installed. Are you comfortable with, you, you suggested four months, is that your suggestion? Or are you, could you go with six or what?
Well, I think if we do, because by regulations, they actually do have six months to complete it. So I give them the six months.
Contingencies are in six months, this, oh, this is a contingency.
Yes.
Yes.
This, this is a contingency item, so this is six months.
So you're good. You'd be good with six months there rather than one month.
Okay. So if, 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 what happens if, I apologize. I, what, what happens if Black Hills Energy doesn't get there? What do we do?
Well, if you're in good faith, trying to get this done, I think the building department is gonna work with you. I mean, can I ask, Wyatt? How would you, how would you respond to that?
And I know it's fantastic.
If they're trying and they've got, they've asked for the permits and they've got the contract to get it done, how could, how would you work with that?
If they apply for permits, we, we, we're obligated to issue permits, okay? I just don't see why they wait 16 months or 18 months before they even start talking about an application.
What are we talking about?
So if we're backing up to the original contingencies, they've got till March 22nd, 22 to meet the original contingencies.
Oh, was this in the original?
No. Excuse me.
This wasn't in the original.
That's not. That's not.
Okay, so I'm not, so the bathroom's resolved. We're talking about the power pole.
The power pole, we have, I, I, we have no control, I don't even know why it's on.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, it's-
Can we just remove that item then?
Will that guarantee gets built if you pull that contingency out?
It's on the site plan.
Okay.
So the way this works is that they come out and inspect, and if it's not there, what's gonna happen?
Those valve poles aren't going anywhere, that's what's gonna feed my internet to the bar.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna eliminate, eliminate 11. Is that what I'm hearing?
Is that okay with you guys?
Are we-
To eliminate 11?
To eliminate 11. As long as it's taken care of through the site plan.
It's on the site plan.
Then we're okay, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Could I, could I summarize what a motion might say?
Good luck. Are we through with everything there?
Does anybody have any other questions?
We haven't even heard Micah's report.
Okay, right. Sure, absolutely.
Well, the other thing is the contractor's yard.
Alright, Micah, go ahead and talk to us.
Hello, everybody.
Welcome back.
Micah, trying to learn into what has all, has not already.
Yes. Okay. So staff recommends approval for the special review use application with the following contingencies. So bear with me, did we discuss number one, the revise of the special review boundaries?
With it.
Okay. Provide an operational characteristics note section on the SRU site plan to address all operations, including but not limited to, no travel, trailers may be occupied by RV ranch patrons, assistants, employees, or host campers for more than the equivalent of three months per year. Number of assistants, employees, and host campers. Days and hours of operation.
Wyatt, we've, we've got that in front of us, Micah, you don't have to do all that.
You don't have to read it.
No.
Just address things that have been addressed or aren't in writing.
Oh.
Yeah.
They're present, yeah.
Then that's everything that you have.
Right, and, just any further comments you have?
No, sir.
Okay, alright, I think we can-
Well, I guess I do have one.
Okay.
So I wanna make sure everyone's clear on why there have been timeframes put on these things.
Okay.
Yes, you guys were seen in March of 2020, correct? And then, you had six months to address all the contingencies except for the bathroom. Okay? So, when you're saying that you had a meeting and that something was said about you don't do anything, those things should've been completed before the April of 2021 meeting. Does that make sense?
However, however, it came to our attention on April 29th that there was no building for the bathroom on the site plan. So there needed to be a site plan revision from the get-go.
But what I'm trying to get at is that the other contingencies really should've been done prior to that meeting.
The county commissioners in the last meeting, okay, with Sean, we worked originally with Sean on this, Sean Garrett. What they told us to do is, don't do anything, let's get it all settled up on this major modification. So we've been holding down since before February of this year because we could, we kept being told, don't do nothing, don't do anything, we have no permission to do anything without the county's direct permission. And now we get, we know that, and they're not doing anything.
Okay, I, I, point taken, point taken. Alright, okay. John, you were gonna talk about our motion, by the way.
Well, there's the, uh, I have to seek additional clarification before I'm ready to talk about what might be in a motion. So, the under-numbered contingency, number two, A, no travel trailer may be occupied by, by RV ranch patrons, assistants, employees, or host campers for more than the equivalent of three months per year. And so that, I understood that you were, that, that was, that there was a problem with that. No, there's no problem with that? Okay, alright, good. So then, a potential motion that you might hear would be to approve, um, this SRU 21002 with the deletion of two E, with the deletion of 10 and 11, and change species in 19 and 20 to, to genus.
And four talks about this park model thing. That, that's not gonna happen, that was regarding the, uh, security spaces, this park.
Yeah, I think, I think we talked about removing four also.
Okay, so four is removed.
Yeah, because you don't have park models, you just-
Yeah, because it, you don't have park models, you just have people that park there that act as security.
It's not a park, right.
So that, that would, with that addition, yes.
And seven, and seven puts back in March 10th of 2022. Bathrooms.
Correct.
Okay.
So nowhere, okay.
We don't have a motion on the floor here, we're talking about that. I do want to discuss the, the, the 10-year-old RVs that come on up out there. Right now, there are RVs out there that are clearly a lot older than 10 years and they're in terrible condition. There are a lot of sites there that are junky and it does not look at all like the plan that you first brought to us a couple of years ago. Okay? I'm not happy with that. Okay? I'm, I'm willing to work with you here, but you have to understand that you've not presented us what we thought we were getting when this first came to us. Okay? You understand?
That, that was originally an omission, okay, and a mistake, and we meant to correct it. And we've just gone back and forth over, what was it, last year and a half with Sean? Is when we started all this with the pre-app meeting and everything? And the commissioner said, just get it all done with this major modification. So all this was going to get done with this, but let's, specifically, let's address the 10 years. There are rigs in there that, that are, have faded paint, but inside they are brand-new, they have home furniture. And they, they got them and they, they build them like a home. They take out like a hot water heater and they'll put in these instant hot, what's, what's that called? Hot water on demand?
On demand.
On demand hot water system. So people are modifying them. As far as the outside, we have a guest in there and thank you for driving through and thank you for driving through because it makes my job easier. You saw a guy there for five days with some flowers pointed in space number three. How can you miss him? You couldn't have missed him. But he's only there for three days. Normally, we, we would not want such an eyesore there, okay? But he's there for three days, we didn't know, and the inside is immaculate, it's just the outside that's not. He's also a repeat customer and he didn't come in that rig last time either. So we, when we made the reservation, we had no idea he was going to come in such that. Another one, guy had it stolen. It's a, he's painting it right now. You probably saw the tan being painted.
You say he stole it?
No, it was stolen. Yeah, someone stole it and he's painting it. That's the tan one. So when you first walked, when you first drove in the park, it's towards the last row, it's towards the row on the left, towards, towards like the last third. Okay, so that's being addressed. We've had people, and we walk the park every day, we have people that, that violate our rules. We correct them as soon as we understand that they are, are done. But the, but specifically the ages of the rigs, if they have just some faded paint, that's not what we're concerned. We don't want duct tape. We don't want anything sticking out of the windows like an air conditioning, nothing, nothing that's going to be an eyesore. We don't want them putting stuff under their RVs. We don't want to put them stuff next to their RVs. They're just not here long enough. So, I'm sorry, I'm digressing. So the age of, of the rigs, some of them are legitimately a lot nicer refurbished, people are not buying new, they're buying used ones, stripping them and, 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 and building really nice things. So we, we do allow what like the paint, the faded paint and that stuff. Okay? But again, everything has to be working, it has to fit the definition of a travel trailer park. We do stick our, I don't know if it's legal, but we do, we do take a peek inside, we do ask if everything's working. We don't have anybody doing repairs there. That's the biggest thing. And, and that's, that's the most important thing, is nothing that like has an air conditioning, duct tape, or is needed of repairs. We're not a repair shop.
Okay.
You're just there to park it there.
Okay. All right. Now commissioners, talk to me.
I have another contingency for you. For them. Actually, your water system, when you go above 25 taps or 25 patrons, you become a public water system. So you'll have to get with Colorado Public Health, you'll have to become a public water system and you'll have to take the test and become a operator.
We, we're working with, I'm sorry, I'm killing her. Forgive me. Already got slapped once today here. We have been working with Kate.
Morel.
Morel, okay, from day one about our water system. All right? There has been some questions about it, but we have not changed anything. We are compliant with the state currently. We are not a water, we, we are exactly who and what we should be. Having said that, can I talk about the atmospheric generators?
No, I get what he's saying. You're missing what he's saying. And you have to remember who he is. He works for the city water department, so he knows his stuff. And what Mark is saying is that because you have more than 25 taps, you now are a state regulated system and you have to have a state permit, which is what Brian is saying. So you're good.
Oh. Let's say why it's.
I had a discussion last month with the state in regards to this, okay? Because it is being bought and hauled and put into a system, okay? And it, and it is included in the park rental fee, they are not charging water. So the water is supplied to the area, so the state doesn't get involved. They are even applying.
Good.
Wow.
Well, that's new to me. Thank you.
Well, there you have it.
Good.
No more contingency.
That's a new one.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, please.
Tell me about your atmospheric water generator. I was looking for it the other day, I didn't see any apparatus around. Is it functioning?
We don't have it yet.
Okay. But you, you expect it to be able to provide a?
Anything over 20% humidity, this thing can generate up to 1,000 gallons per day.
Really? Okay.
We're the first ones approved in the state with, we're, we're the test pilot for this.
Is it an energy eater?
No. It's basically what it is, is if you think about your home air conditioner.
Yeah, I know what they do.
It's a deep off cycle.
Yeah.
Basically the same thing.
Okay. It'll be interesting to see it.
Okay. Comments, other commissioners? I'm not ready for a motion here shortly.
Good.
I'm going to have to buy supper.
Thing else. Larry, you got anything?
Well, the only, the only thing I've got is that with the original SRU, we had a 30-day limit on RVs. And there have been, there's RVs that have been there way longer than 30 days.
We're extending it to 89.
I know you are.
Okay.
But there have been RVs that I'm sure have been there longer than 89 days even at this point. They go through there quite often. So what's, what are we doing here as far as?
We are being guided. Okay. First of all, we, we, we've been guided by Matt Cope, Garrett, Sean Garrett, Dan, what's Dan's last name?
Shorty.
Uh, thank you. And this is going to get me in trouble, but in an environmental meeting offline, Ms. Jackson weighed in and commented and told us what we needed to do to be in compliance. And we, there's 27 parks, the last time I counted, and that was three years ago in the county. And, and as far as I know, I don't know what every other park is doing, but we reached out to the county, we specifically asked what to do. Now, my solution to this was to become not a travel trailer park, but a mobile home park. Okay? And I was shot down by, by Matt Cope, I was shot down by Garrett, I was shot down by, by Herb, I was shot down by Dan, because I ordered this thing. And with your commission, maybe we should have this discussion.
No, 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 we're not going to go there. That's not part of what's in front of us today. We, we're not doing that.
So, so, okay, so what we do, I'm just going to go there. So what he does is he renews the lease. So he sets a term for the lease. At the end of the lease, they renew the lease.
And now we'll sit down. You're correct, Commissioner Brown. It's a violation of the original permit to allow them to stay longer than 30 days.
And if we agree to this, it would be 89 days, but at the end of 89 days, they would have to.
Apparently they'll renew the lease and go as long as they want. That's what I just heard.
We can't allow that.
How do, how do other RV parks do it? How does every other RV park operate?
I don't know. I honestly don't.
So here's the tip. If you want this approved, you've got to stick to your 89 days.
And they can't be there after 89 days.
Then they need to move out.
They need to move out.
And they can move back in just like the state.
Right. But now I don't know what the, the original SRU was 30 days and I think it was a total of three months, was it not? On the original SRU? Per year?
About 43 years.
I don't recall the second part. It might be there, but I don't.
Because it was, yeah, I saw it. Certain period of time, per year, that, that it could be, remain there. I don't know what that is.
89 days is what we're contemplating now, but you need to stick to that. You got to start following the rules. Okay. I'm open to that motion. John, I don't envy you this.
Go for it.
Oh, boy. The, well, the, please commissioners, help me out here if I, I drift off the path. So I move that we approve SRU 21002 with the contingencies, with the exceptions, that 2E be deleted, that number four be deleted, that number seven, Reed, shall be completed
Can you say the end of March of 2022, please?
What was the date in the original SRU?
March 10th, March 10th.
March 10th?
The approval happened on March 10th.
Okay.
And he had 18 months or whatever it was to?
March, March.
Two years.
Two years. March 10th, 2022.
So then it's March 10th.
March 10th, 2022.
March 10th, '22.
You want March 10th?
That's what the SRU was.
Yes.
Okay.[1696.80]